Thursday, September 4th. Early voting is here, ladies and gentlemen, for District Five.
We have another candidate hoping to get your vote. It is a familiar face. Stay tuned now for a new episode of Rootin' Progress.
Welcome, everybody, for another episode of Rootin' in Progress. I am your host, Terrence Middlebrooks. Alongside.
Naisha Harper.
Naisha Harper, our executive producer, not D N. D N is out with this, uh, out this morning, so Naisha's.
I'm just filling in the seats today.
Yeah, welcome to the big seat.
This is different.
It is.
I've sat in that seat a couple of times. But this is, this is different, so bear with me.
Yeah, Naisha's, Naisha's not new to Rootin' in Progress. Of course, she's been on our few episodes in the past, but she is heavily involved with the behind the scenes, all of our guests, all of the graphics that you see right here on your screen. So, but being in front of the camera, welcome.
Thanks. Be nice to me.
Absolutely. Oh, you know I'm gonna be nice to you. You know I'm always nice to you.
We'll see.
Yeah, yeah, so. But we're gonna, we're gonna continue this conversation, folks. And if you've been tuned into us for the last couple of weeks, we've had pretty much all of the candidates, um, from who's running for the District Five seat here in Tampa on. And when I say some, that doesn't mean that we did not reach out to all. So if you are a regular viewer, watcher, listener, and you follow someone in this race and you wonder why you haven't seen them, do know that we have reached out to them.
Yes, there's a lot of candidates we wanted to invite everyone so they can have their time to, you know, shine, let the voters know why they should vote for them.
Yep.
And.
Yeah, so with further ado, we're gonna bring in our next candidate, Mr. Thomas Scott.
Welcome in.
Good morning and thank you for the invite. I'm great, I'm great. Up early this morning waving out, uh, to all the drivers passing by. Let them know we're in this race.
I know, that's right. Actually, speaking of driving by, so I live in District Five and I saw your, one of your campaign signs on the corner of like Cass and something. I was like, oh, come on, Mr. Scott.
Mr. Scott, we, we gonna get right into this, you know? We, we got a lot of talk about this, this hour, and you are a gentleman that has a lot to share, right?
Yes, sir.
So tell, tell us a little bit about Thomas Scott, where you're from, you know, how'd you end up in Tampa, all of that?
Yeah, well, my home is, uh, Macon, Georgia. That's eighty-five miles south of Atlanta. And as you know, that's the home also of Little Richard and, uh, yeah, your oldest Redden, Blue Moon Oldham, a few other stars back in the day that some of you may know about, may not. But, uh, then I moved to Jacksonville, finished, finished up at University of North Florida there in Jacksonville, uh, a youth pastor, uh, there at the Fourth Street Church of God. And then later came to, uh, the city of Tampa in nineteen eighty, April twenty-fifth, nineteen eighty, and moved to Tampa, took a small church at that time, a Twenty-Second Street Church of God. Now, we, uh, we moved within three years and built a whole new campus, named Thirty-Fourth Street Church of God. Been there forty-five years as a senior pastor. Uh, so that's a little bit about my background, you know, uh, there.
All right, so, uh, let's talk about, let's dive right back into your political background. So how'd you end up in politics? Well, actually, let me, let me pause right there, let me pause right there. You said you're a pastor, are you still a pastor or? Okay, tell us a little bit about where you, where your, where your church is.
Yeah, Thirty-Fourth Street Church of God, Three Thousand North, Thirty-Fourth Street. It's over in Jackson Heights, Bama Heights area, about ten blocks up from Ebor City, you know?
Yeah, how long you been lead pastor there?
I've been there forty-five years. Came as a young man, twenty-six years old, okay? And came in with one son, Marcus, uh, my son, who's down here with us today. But, uh, we came with one son, now I have three children. By the way, uh, just, just so y'all know, I'm a twin.
Really?
And my wife is a triplet.
Oh, hold on.
Identical or fraternal?
Uh, I'm paternal, yeah.
Okay.
My wife, triplets, they, they look alike.
Oh, my goodness. Wow, and then how many, you got, you got three kids, four kids?
Three kids.
No triplets, no, no twins?
No, but my son Marcus has a set of twins. My other son, his daughter has a set of twins, so we got twins running around.
Get out of here.
So it's true, it does skip a generation.
Yes.
Oh.
At least, at least in this case, it did.
It did?
Yeah.
Well, that, okay, so pastor for forty-five years, man, what a blessing.
And so we built a brand-new church, you know, there where we located now, uh, Thirty-Fourth Street.
Right.
Built the school, one of the leading schools in Hillsborough County, nationally recognized, accredited, uh, you know? We went up to, uh, fifth grade. Uh, we, at one time, had over three hundred students that attended our school. So we've been very successful and we created a community development corporation, which now is still in place to serve the community, which we live in. And so we've been able to, even before I got into politics, we were very involved with the community, trying to make a difference.
Now, is your church in that school? Are they all in District Five?
Yes, every one of them right there in District Five. You know, well, the schools are connected to the church, okay? And then the CDC has crossed the street. So we tried to buy up all the property around us.
Got you.
And, uh, try to develop that and enhance the area, you know? Because if you go way back to nineteen eighty, um, Bama Heights, Jackson Heights was not a, a, it was a very depressed, you know, neighborhood. And so we made some improvements.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you know this district, back front, up, down, side, side?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I know every little, uh, as, as old people say, every little crevices and corners and everything.
Every nook and cranny, yeah.
Well, I mean, you, you had the plan to develop this community for a very, very long time, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, I served, I got, I ran for office in, uh, nineteen ninety-two for school board, actually, and I lost that race by two hundred votes in a, in a, uh, in a second runoff. Uh, but they came back in nineteen ninety-six and I ran for Hillsborough County Commission, District Three, and I won in a runoff with eighty-six votes.
Okay.
About eighty-six vote. Went on to serve ten years on the county commission. I served three turns as chairman of the Board of County Commission. And then I went to city council in two thousand and seven and served one turn, which is four years, and I served three times as chairman of Tampa City Council. Now, when I was on the Board of County Commission, that is when we had the vision for East Tampa to redevelop, to create the, uh, CRA, Community Redevelopment Area. That's when we had the vision for, for that.
Wow, that's, I mean, you, you talk about, like, if you look at the development, for those that are not familiar with District Five, it's one of the, it is the largest districts in Hillsborough County.
Yes.
And the, it has a number of, of many different developments and the characteristics of District Five is, it's all over the place.
From Channel Side up to Sulfur Springs.
Absolutely.
East Tampa, there's, in, like I said, I live in District Five, so I see it's like lots, construction, I'm like, okay, what is this about to be? It's, it's building up.
Yeah, yeah, parts of it is, because then you cross over the interstate.
That's true.
Yeah, well, a lot of development is taking place in District Five. I think you hit a very valid point. District Five is very key to the city of Tampa. You think about it, District Five is downtown. District Five is Channel Side. If you've been down in Channel Side, you know the development in the Grove.
Absolutely.
District Side is the port of Tampa. Talk about the economic engine, the port, cruise ships, the ships that are coming in.
Tourism, all that.
All of that at the port, that's in District Five, okay? Uh, uh, then you go to Central Park. Central Park is being redeveloped now, and that's where a lot of development is taking place there.
Is that like Zoot Tampa area, Laurine Park?
That's close to, Central Park is close to downtown, the Encore Development there.
Oh, okay.
Down Nebraska, Central Avenue, where years ago, it used to be a main central point for black businesses during that time, yeah. And then the interstate came through and all of that, yeah. But, but that Central Park is, is a CRA there as well.
Well, let's, let's kind of dive into your political background. Why don't you give us a little brief history? You said you ran for school board, what else have you done for the city of Tampa?
Yeah, the, uh, on the, uh, Tampa City Council, District Five for four years. Then I ran for mayor, you know, at that time, there was Bob Buckhorn, Rose Felita, Ed Tarantcheck, Dick Greco, and my, there were five of us in that race. Um, that probably one of the big races for mayor, uh, back in twenty-eleven. And, um, uh, you know, Dick Greco, if you may know, if you ever heard that name, was a mayor, had been mayor several times before. Ed Tarantcheck and I had served on county commission. Bob Buckhorn had served on, uh, the city council, uh, did two term. And so Bob was in a runoff with Rose Felita, he, he won that race. Uh, so it brings back a lot of memory, a lot of fun memories of campaigning, man, you know, waving signs and getting to know people, you know? And that's, that's been an exciting time really for me, just getting to know people, man, just talking to people and finding what their issues are, what their concerns are. How can we help you?
Yeah.
How can we help our community? How can we help our city, uh, be a better place?
Well, and that, that kind of leads me to my next question, which you, you've answered a part of it. A lot of people don't agree that you mix politics and religion. As a pastor, how do you feel about that? And then what made you dive into the polit, the political, uh, ring?
Well, from a historical standpoint, I come from a church in Macon, Georgia, has always been involved in the civil rights movement and in politics. The history of the civil rights movement began in the church, okay? Uh, not only did it begin to, even, even the NAACP was created and started in churches. And so when you look at, you start talking about politics, start talking about civil rights, there's always been that relationship, there's always been that connection. Martin Luther King could only go and meet in churches, you know? And, and so as a result of that, and even during those times, a lot of the politicians came to churches to be seen and to be heard. And so churches have always played a role. Now, if you want to take me, if you want me to take you back to the biblical standpoint, I'll talk about King David being king of Israel, you know? Uh, political, you know, I could go all the way back from a political standpoint. But the church has always been involved in civil rights, in the area of, uh, of politics.
Yeah, well, and then going back to building your school and the church there in that area, did you get any pushback at the time? And if you did, what was it? What was the pushback that you received?
Just what you said, there's been those who believe that church should not be involved in politics, even though you know today, now, according to the Trump administration, you can now, you can now, churches can now even endorse candidates, you know? So that shows you how far we, we have come. Years ago, you couldn't, couldn't do that, but not too long ago, the IRS ruled that churches can even now endorse candidates, you know? But churches have always been involved with politics. But I had some pushback from, even from some of my colleagues who felt like, well, you know, pastors should not be involved in politics. Here's, here's where I come from. The church is an area where you can help people from a spiritual standpoint. But also now, uh, I have a spiritual issue that I, that I face and deal with, but I also have physical issues, uh, financial issues, uh, economic issues that's in the political arena. Uh, so I should be talking to elected officials who now can have an impact in my life from a financial standpoint, uh, from a physical standpoint, from a health standpoint. And so you cannot, I do not believe you cannot separate those. So that's one of the reasons I got involved in the political area, because I saw that one of the weaknesses in the community was the absence of what I call spiritual leadership, being able to embrace the political arena and then bring those resources into the community to help the community to better themselves.
Right, and, and well, being a lead pastor, your congregation is full of all of those.
Yes.
From the health disparities to the economic disparities, so on and so forth. So I, I, I see why you, you are so heavily involved in the, in the political game as well as throwing your hat again, again.
Yes.
In this District Five race. Let's talk a little bit about that. Naisha, you got, you wanna?
I was gonna say, you did outstand as running back in two thousand and seven.
Right.
And then you ran for mayor.
Right.
But you were still involved in the community.
Right.
But were you still doing things with council? Were you attending city council meetings? Were you like making your voice heard as a resident, not being on, on the other side of the?
Yes, yeah, in other words, not being an elected official, I found myself back in the community again, you know, helping out, speaking out on issues, going to school board meetings, uh, fighting for Jess, uh, when they was talking about eradicating the Taryn and Jess. So, you know, I was still involved with issues, going to city council.
Okay.
Speaking, in fact, I was just recently, uh, on this racial reconciliation committee that was appointed by city council. So I'm, I'm a part of that, involved in that. So I maintain a connection, uh, and kept involved. I didn't go home and sit down and, you know, cry and feel sorry, you know, and relax. But, you know, the community is my heart, okay? The city of Tampa is, I love and believe in, and I think that I have a role and a part to make it better for all of our citizens. So, yes, so I, so I didn't just sit down. Now, in this race, I'm involved in this race, but one, it's a short term.
It is.
We are finishing out a councilwoman Gwen Henderson term, which is about sixteen months. So you need someone who has the experience. See, out of the fourteen candidate, nobody else has, has held public office but me. Nobody else has served as chairman of both Hillsborough County Commission and city council but me. No one else, in my understanding, uh, that I believe has an understanding, relationship with city council other than me, because I know them, I have worked with them, some of them who I served with are still there. Charlie Miranda is still there, you know? I think Charlie probably the longest-serving city council person we have in the, in the history of Tampa, uh, Charlie Miranda, who, who still is on Tampa City Council.
So you, you, you think you have an advantage? You know you have an advantage?
Well, I think I have experience.
Okay.
I have experience, I have a leadership and integrity. Okay, those are the things that we try to highlight. Experience because I've been there before, have served there before. Uh, a leadership because I served three turns as chairman of both Hillsborough County Commission and city council, which means my colleagues elected me three terms to represent them and to lead them, you know, into discussion of the budget and to lead them in terms of, uh, resolutions and, and ordinance for this, for the city of Tampa and Hillsborough County. Uh, when I left Hillsborough County, the budget was at four point five billion dollars, okay? Uh, when I left the city of Tampa, the budget was a little over a billion dollars. Today is two billion dollars.
Yeah.
But we bring a wealth of experience and knowledge of how the budget function, how the budget work. And, uh, we bring, we bring a leadership, a leadership skill that is very visible, uh, not only as elected official, but as a pastor.
Right.
You know, in the community.
So why now? You've mentioned that this term is, of course, filling Gwen Henderson's seat with only about seventeen months. Why not wait until twenty twenty-seven? Since you have that experience to just start your own campaign fresh for the, what is it, four years? Why now instead of then?
The very reason is because it's a short term, one. Two, you need someone with the experience who can hit the ground on day one.
You don't think your, your opponents will, it'll take them more months?
It'll take them longer, it would, oh, my God, yes. It's gonna take them a lot longer, uh, to learn just the political landscape, learn what's happening, learn the budget, learn the other commissioner, you know, building relationships and that sort of thing. So I have the experience already, I have the leadership already to hit the ground day one, once I'm sworn in. You know, I don't have to go and fumble over the, the agenda. I know the agenda, you know, the format of the agenda. And, uh, I have colleagues who are already on there who have much, a lot of respect for me because of my past experience, because of my past leadership, serving on both Hillsborough County, uh, County Commission and the city council.
Nice, he said, I'm not new to this, I'm true to this.
With a name like Thomas Scott, who, you know, you've been around this area for, for, for many decades, again, I'm gonna talk about having the advantage. Do you think just name alone gives you the advantage?
Well, let's, let's put it this way, I think that my name is probably more recognizable than those who are just starting out, who has not run before. And so I would say, uh, that because I have served, the name Thomas Scott is out there, there are those who remember a lot of the accomplishments. I mean, just think about the CRA, the Community Redevelopment Area, which we drew, I drew, which is the largest CRA in the state of Florida, which realized over two hundred million dollars in the life of that CRA. And look at the economic development that has already taken place in Jackson Heights, uh, in, uh, in Bama Heights, you know, and, uh, and, uh, in downtown, Channel Side, Central Park, West Tampa, all those are, uh, uh, recognizing now new growth redevelopment. And that's, as a result of the CRA's Community Redevelopment Area, that's what CRA is, that we voted for or either started.
Going back to that name, okay? Uh, times have changed. Since the last time you held office and this seat.
Yes.
This whole district has did a full facelift, had a full facelift.
Mm-hmm.
Um, people have moved in, I've, I've even heard the term that Tampa's now become a melting pot.
Yeah.
That it's very, it's rare that you find true Tampanians. And with that said, Thomas Scott, what is Thomas Scott doing to get his name and face out there? So when these newcomers go to the polls, they know who you are?
Yeah, one of the things we're doing is we've been having, uh, what we call Thomas Talks, going into businesses like Big John.
Say it again, Thomas?
Thomas Talk.
Thomas Talk.
So we're going into businesses and talking to them and highlighting who I am and what I bring as, in terms of my experience and my leadership and reminding. Now, keep in mind, uh, well, you may not know this, but there are five thousand eight hundred super voters in District Five. Now, there are forty-four thousand registered voters inside of District Five. In twenty twenty-three, five thousand one hundred and ninety-nine people voted in a mayor race in District Five out of forty-four thousand.
It's ridiculous.
That's, that's my point.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, we have five thousand eight hundred, uh, super voters. We have reached out to every one of those super voters. We know that they are going to vote. Super voters, they vote in every elect, they do not miss an election. So we have reached out to every one of those voters. We have called them, knocked on their doors, walked in the community, sent emails, flyers, uh, text messages. And so just to remind you from your point, remind people who I am, that's number one. By the way, a lot of those super voters are older people, elderly people, by the way. Uh, when we're knocking on a lot of doors, it was a lot of elderly people that came to the door, oh, Reverend Scott, hey, I know who you are. Hey, good to see you, thank you for being out in the community. So the name is still there with a lot of the seniors, okay? But then we're trying to educate the new people.
Right.
Who have moved in, who we are, by also sending out mail pieces, you know, flyers and all that, reminding them and letting them know that Thomas Scott created the CRA for East Tampa. Thomas Scott voted for the CRA for Channel Side, Central Park, you know, downtown Tampa Heights, you know, uh, all those areas that, Seminole Heights.
So it sounds like you have the, you, you said the super voters are a lot of the older populations.
Yes.
And so District Five is, University of Tampa is in District Five. So how are you, are you, are you setting up any forms for like the college-age students or anything of that sort?
Listen, no, I ain't talk about forum, you don't have any forums?
But just like, for just like that, that age range, that age group?
Yeah, we've had, I mean, oh, my God, so many forums. Almost every night last week, we had a forum somewhere in Tampa, you know? Um, a lot of the college students don't hardly come out to those forums and that sort of thing, you know? But we have had them throughout District Five. You know, we had some down, we had one last, downtown last week. Uh, the Arts Council, or the Arts, uh, Art in District Five group had one downtown and that went extremely well. And, uh, we had Tampa Heights, we had a forum, Steve Life Andrews, that was a forum, you know, Channel Side was a forum, you know? And it's hard to get in Channel Side, but, you know, they, they escort you, you know, in one of these developments and one of these high-rise buildings and you have to be escorted.
Yeah.
You know?
They're concierge and all that.
Yeah, yeah, but it was, it was, it was very enriching, though. It was very, very enriching to be able to talk to those people that were there. It was exciting, you know? But, uh, but the, the younger, younger voter, uh, the college-age student, we have not seen them turn out. Now, one of the things I want to do once I'm elected, uh, is to have what we call, uh, an academy, citizen academy, to educate the voters about how city government works, okay? And how to be able to access city government. That's one thing I want to do. The second thing I want to do is bring, what you're talking about, bring city council into the community so that the people can know who represent them and have those meetings there, again, to, to be able to access their elected official. Third thing we want to do is a hundred-day plan is look at the resources, bring our share of the resources to create jobs, to improve the roads, uh, uh, infrastructure in terms of flooding and all that. So all that's part of the plan that we want to do to help District Five continue to grow and to help the citizens understand that your government is here for you.
We're gonna pause right there, because I want to dive deeper into that, those, those topics. So, but folks, we're gonna take a quick break. We want you to stay tuned, do not leave, we will be right back. Ladies and gentlemen, we are back from our new break system that we have here.
Yeah, it's a little different vibe.
So I'm glad you guys stuck with us. Uh, if you're just now joining us, we are here in the Rootin' in Progress studio. I'm your co-host, Terrence Middlebrooks, along with Naisha Harper and our District Five candidate, Thomas Scott. Now, Mr. Scott, you were just talking about some of the main topics, um, on your agenda if you were elected. You mentioned jobs, you mentioned education, you mentioned housing. Let's start, tell us your plan on the housing crisis there, here in District Five.
Well, it's a national crisis, crisis, as you may or may not know housing is, but, uh, but affordable housing is a key issue, is a big issue. I think every candidate has affordable housing on their, on their plan, on their platform.
We've heard a lot of, a lot of plans and.
Yeah, yeah.
But what, go ahead.
But I'm the only candidate who has done that through the CRAs and the CRA that we grew for East Tampa.
Okay.
Uh, affordable housing there, you can, by the way, for East Tampa, you can get fifty thousand dollars from the CRA, Community Redevelopment Area, to help you with a down payment assistance. You live in East Tampa, again, uh, that you're talking about East Tampa, we're talking about Jackson Heights, Bama Heights, Highland Pine, that area. So if you live in, if you live in East Tampa today because of the CRA that I created, Community Redevelopment Area that I created and drew, you can get a down payment assistance of fifty thousand dollars. And you can get additional fifty thousand through the city housing program that's federally funded. So you can get a hundred thousand dollars, one hundred thousand, thousand dollars to help you in terms of your house, uh, down payment assistance for affordable housing.
What's the catch? Is there a catch?
No, it's a reality, man, it's.
Are there qualifications?
All, all, you have to qualify, you have to qualify, uh, to be able to get those resources. And that, there again, you have to educate the communities. A lot of people don't even know this exists.
Exactly.
I'm not gonna lie to you, I'm taking notes, because I need to know this.
Uh, you have to qualify, it, it's, it's there. That is, uh, CRA committed, Community Redevelopment Committee, which I put in place that you can go and, uh, talk with and they should be able to, uh, guide you and help you. And not only that, but they also approve the recommendations and make recommendation to city council for us to vote on to give those funds to first-time home buyers, uh, economic development. If you have a business.
Yeah.
They just gave, uh, the cigar factory, Newman, I think, it is five million dollars.
Wow.
A few weeks ago, I think they also gave the CDC of Tampa, uh, uh, five million dollars in terms of economic development, affordable housing, those kind of things. So, so there's a lot of money that is available, um, through the CRA, Community Redevelopment Area, there's a lot of money that's available that you can tap into, uh, to, to help businesses, small businesses, as well as homeownership.
How, how are you going to, because we know the cost of housing is skyrocketing.
It's.
Whether you're renting, you're paying a mortgage.
So those people who had those properties and, you know, throughout the generations are struggling right now. How do you, what do you tell those people who are, are, you know, on the verge of either having to move out or lose their, their property, move out of the district? What, what are your, hmm, what's your battle plan to fight for those people?
Gentification is a reality now, uh, in, in, in East Tampa, okay? And so I believe that we need to look at the whole component of affordable housing and what that means. Now, uh, Channel Side, they'll have, they have affordable housing planned and they got to build fifteen thousand new units. Uh, and they're going to take thirty percent of those units, supposed to be affordable housing. Affordable housing for some is eighty percent, uh, AMI, okay, annual, uh, uh, medium income. Uh, some of them will be a hundred and twenty-five percent and then some will be a hundred and forty percent. In terms of gentification, I want us to go back and review that and look at that and see how do we help people whose, uh, uh, taxes have gone up.
Or fall behind.
Right. And, and, and see how we can help them to stay in East Tampa.
Right.
So we have to review that, look at it, and then plan for that, look at incentivizing, you know, to help those residents to be able to stay in East Tampa because we don't want them to move out. And also we don't want them to sell their house for a hundred thousand dollar and then somebody else get the property and building and then they.
Now it's worth two million.
Is District Five?
Close to it, yeah.
Is District Five seeing a quote-unquote exodus?
Yes, oh yes. They're seeing something, yes, oh yes, very much so. Uh, and that's why I said we need to revisit the whole CRA, revisit it, look at it, incentivize, uh, even more so in trying to keep those residents who are there so that they can stay in those homes as opposed of the gentification that is taking place in, uh, East Tampa now.
You mentioned jobs. This is a topic that, that I've asked each and every one of the candidates who, who mentioned jobs. What does jobs look like in District Five? And, and what are, what is your plan to bring jobs to District Five?
Like more jobs?
Just, just, you, you talk about bringing jobs to District Five, right? Is that, that's your plan?
Yes, sir. That's the plan.
What, what is your game plan to that?
Well, first, you need to know that there's already jobs that come in and been created because of the CRA, okay? CRA because we.
What kind of jobs are we talking about, though?
Well, we're talking about factory jobs, but also let me, let me mention this while I'm thinking about that. I've been working with, uh, Dr. Atwater at HCC. There's a program now to help young people, eighteen and older, they can go to HCC today.
Hillsborough County Community College.
That's correct.
For those that don't know.
There are jobs for Limans for TECO. TECO will pay their full expense.
Wow.
And they will start out making sixty-five, seventy thousand dollars, uh, a year.
Off the bat?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That's, that's already in place, okay? Lima. Automobile mechanics can go to Hillsborough County Community. There's a plan in place that that tuition can be paid and help them to become automobile mechanic. Welders, I'm talking, I'm talking about real jobs, real opportunity, uh, to, 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 to get trades. You know, a lot of kids may not qualify, I mean, you know, to go to college. But then here are opportunities for jobs that are available now right here in the city that they can have. Now, can I, can I go a step further? Not only, uh, jobs being created in East Tampa right now and new homes are being, uh, developed, but also look at, uh, the Rays, talking about coming to Tampa.
Building a stadium there in District Five.
Guess what? They talking about building in, in District Five.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You talking about a stadium that's gonna cost about a billion dollars, one point one billion dollars. Can you imagine the economic opportunity in District Five?
So it sounds like you're for it.
Well, I'm just. That's, that's a lot of talk and discussion about that, you know?
Well, and, and man, hats off to you and, and, you know, you probably gave the most direct answer to that question.
Yeah.
Hands down. You, you sound like you have a plan and, you know, that partnership that ACC has with TECO and then the, the community.
Yeah.
It's, it's huge. Again, I've asked this question to just about every candidate and they've kind of gave their spiel because we know, you know, during the early, this, this administration, this, this, uh, administration that's in office now talked about tariffs and jobs moving out of the country, trying to get jobs back. So we know what a fight it is to just get your, 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 like you said, your assembly line jobs, your, your manufacturers to come back to the United States.
Right.
Let alone East Tampa or, or District Five.
That's sir.
That partnership that you said that, that is taking place right now with TECO and Limans. Shoot, I have a seventeen-year-old right now, bro. I might have him looking to that, man, coming out like that. I mean, that's, that's huge.
And right before hurricane season, well, we're in hurricane season, right before like a storm, a big storm hits, that's when they're needed most.
Yeah.
Very much so.
Those Limans, yeah, absolutely.
Well, Limans, welders, I mean.
Electricians, plumbers.
They make a ton of money.
Yeah.
A ton of money. One guy who went through the program, they started his own welding company and hiring people. See, that's how, that's how, again, we have to educate the community of what is there, what is available.
Right.
So they can avail themselves to this kind of resources, you know? It's, it's, it's a lot of, a lot of opportunity that's out there, you know?
Let's talk about the crime in, in District Five. What is your plan to bridge that gap, that trust, build that trust to, to stop that crime? It's kind of, it's kind of like maybe two or three questions all in one.
Yeah, yeah.
In that community, going back to, let's start off with the, just that trust.
Yeah.
Building that, that.
The trust with law enforcement.
Yeah, with law enforcement and, and the youth and the community.
And you, if you're the elected official.
Yeah, yeah. By the way, I was endorsed, uh, by the PD, uh, Tampa PD, uh, the public, the Police Benevolent Association, I was endorsed by them, so, um, which is great to have their endorsement. And quite a few endorsements we had as well. The Florida Sentinel endorsed us, you know, and, uh, and the West Coast Labor Council endorsed us as well. And so we had quite a few endorsements that we enjoyed. But let's talk about the relationship. One is, I, I need us to understand we have a strong mayor form of government. So the police answers to the mayor, not to city council.
Gotcha.
So we need to understand that, number one. However, city council can work with the administration and say, community policing is important. You need to be out your cars, you need to be walking in the neighborhoods and meeting the resident and the citizen so that you get to know them and they get to know you, building that relationship, okay? Uh, bridging those gaps. I think that's huge and very important.
Right.
And also I think it's important that we have to look at how the Tampa Police Department is made up. What is the demographics, the diversity that's there? All that's important when we start talking about the city of Tampa and community. And so we got to make sure that those persons that are walking those beat, those persons who are driving those neighborhoods also are persons of color, you know, and who represent the community as well. So, so that people can feel, uh, safe. You know, there used to be a time, man, we used to just could sit on the front porch and not have to worry about anything. I mean, nowadays, people kind of, it's kind of scared.
Scared to even sit on the front porch during the day.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And so I, I want the people in District Five to feel safe. I want them to feel like, uh, they have police officers who know them and they know them and they can trust them and, and having that, uh, transparency there. And so I think city council can work with the administration because again, because we have a strong mayor form of government, which means again, that, that's the executive branch uh, that carries out the ordinances and the resolutions by, of city council. So we have to work with the administration. By the way, city council only has one legislative aide. We do not have a staff. That's all the staff with the, with the mayor, with that administration. So we have to work, uh, there.
A lot of collaboration.
Yes.
And speaking of collaboration, you mentioned, or, let me backtrack. Speaking of collaboration, you have to work with other city council members.
Yes.
What are your plans for that?
Yeah.
To get things passed.
Well, I think, I think it's important to recognize, one, that I already know all of them there. I know also all of the city council persons. Secondly, I have appeared before them on a numerous occasion, either on issues like the racial reconciliation issue that, uh, that they passed, the resolution they passed, five sixty-eight, or they've invited me to come back periodically, just do the invocation. So they all know me. And they know my experience as a leader. And so I think we won't have a problem there with, with that relationship. Um, because it's already been established. One thing about being an elected official and you stay active, you get to know other elected officials as well. And so, you know, so you, you're still attending certain types of events and you still get to know those who also have followed you and, and have been elected as well. So, so those relationships will come easy for me, you know? Now, I can't say that for other candidates, but for me, they will be relatively easy, uh, to have, yeah.
That's true.
So one more, and I know this may be sting us off, of course, just a little tiny bit, but you mentioned the racial reconciliation committee. We've had Louis Vier in to talk about that. Can you just tell us where that stands?
Well, I'm on that committee and right now it's at a standstill, it's at a stalemate because they need funding for four more meetings. We requested, uh, additional funding to city council because city council appointed the committee. Uh, evidently, the mayor did not include that, from my understanding, in the budget. And so I've been raising that question with some of the city council person, where is, where is the funding? And they're trying to say, uh, they've been, well, I've been told that that has not, uh, been allocated as yet, that has not been placed in the budget. So that's going to be an issue, trying to get additional funding so that we can finish the report. You cannot make recommendation or finish a report if you don't, uh, have the funding to have the resources or have the, uh, the, um, the advisors to come who are leading this whole discussion regarding racial reconciliation. So there's a report that need to be developed. There's four meetings. Last time we met, we asked for four more meetings, uh, with our consultant to help us to finish it out and to be able to present a report to city council. At that point, city council will receive that report and decide whether they want to move it forward.
Question for you, uh, about the budget. You mentioned the budget and we're going back to the city council budget. Um, there's a strong possibility that it could be passed by the time you're elected in the office. So we're talking like within the next couple of days, if not weeks.
Yes, sir.
What is your plans on, uh, still making a difference if that budget's passed without a representative for District Five?
Yeah, it will be passed. Uh, the election, uh, is September the ninth.
Yeah.
And most people predicting a runoff. Uh, I was hoping I could win without one, but they're predicting a runoff, which means the runoff is October the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
By law, city council has to pass their budget September the thirtieth, by September the thirtieth because it goes into effect October the first. And so by law, it will be already passed if there's a runoff because runoff not to, uh, October twenty-eighth. And so you will have no representative for District Five to have input into the budget. Once the budget is approved by city council, then it goes into effect. And so then what we have to do, once we get there, we have to look at the budget and see what resources may be available. Number one, I think is going to be important to finish the, the racial reconciliation report. I mean, you, you, you gave a charge to a committee and that committee has not completed its work.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so you got to look at that. Then we will look at and see what other resources, uh, that are, that are in that particular budget. However, keeping in mind that Community Redevelopment Area is a big part of its budget that's being used for District Five.
Got you. Well, that, that, um, that's huge. Because, you know, again, like you said, that, that budget will be passed. And without a representative for District Five, do you feel like you could be left behind or do you feel like you're just kind of like, eh, I'm stuck with this?
Be a standstill.
Yeah.
Yeah, you kind of, you kind, there's no representatives, uh, you know, there are today is. Uh, however, I've been in consultation with a few of them, trying to get them to take a look and to make sure that District Five is included, you know, uh, from that perspective. But again, keeping in mind that the CRA Community Redevelopment Area, Redevelopment Area, a lot of the East Tampa, uh, will be realized through that and also Channel Side and, you know, and the other CRA, Central Park, Tampa Heights. Lot of the funds would be used, a lot of resources will be used for, for those communities and for those areas.
Let's quickly dive into transportation.
Yes, sir.
Uh, let's talk about the, the improvements of the roads, road conditions, you know, throughout, throughout downtown District Five.
Cause my car. He going through it. Smokey's going through it.
What's your take on the, perhaps bringing the Brightline train system, rail system to, to Tampa?
We have two problems that, uh, we are facing right now. One, I want to say it's hard because there's a, a move by, uh, Representative Orange to, uh, to not expand, uh, Heart, which is a county bus system. It's county, go through the whole, he's saying there needs to be a city of Tampa and don't need to go through the city of, uh, through, through the, uh, through the rest of the county, which means he's trying to cut service, which means also less funds.
Right.
Uh, there's no public transportation system in America that is self-funding, self-sustaining without, without public dollars. That's number one. Number two, in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, Barack Obama, President Barack Obama brought to the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, two billion dollars of taxpayer dollars. It was rejected. This was for the hi- high-speed rail.
Yep.
From Orlando to Tampa to the airport, okay? Uh, which we will be, we would have been much further ahead and Brightline would not even be an issue. So that was rejected by Governor Rick Scott at that time, okay? So let's be clear, that our taxpayer dollars that President Barack Obama brought to Hillsborough County, two billion dollars for the high-speed rail was turned away because you had a Republican governor and a Democratic president. Turned away our taxpayer dollars. All right, now. Brightline, eh, again, as you read the report, they are like, what, five hundred million, six hundred million dollars deficit? So the question become, how are they gonna make up for that deficit in order to bring Brightline from Tampa, from, uh, from Orlando to Tampa? So that's the question that got to be answered by Brightline. Where are they gonna find the money, the funding to bring Brightline from Orlando to Tampa?
Are you in favor of that system?
Oh, yes. I was in favor in two thousand eight when President bought us two billion dollars, man. It would be built by now.
Yeah.
It'd be up and running. We would have a route, uh, from Tampa, uh, to Orlando, Orlando, uh, to Miami. You know, uh, and so we, we, we lost out on that. That was unfortunate that, that was not a wise decision at that particular time. Heartline gonna be a real challenging issue as we're heart now, they call it heart. Uh, if Orange get, by the way, heart is, heart is, uh, enacted through special legislation through the state legislature, okay? Which means they have to repeal, the legislature will have to repeal that act in order to dissolve Hillsborough County system or heart and make it a city of Tampa, uh, transportation system, which, that will not work. It won't, it won't work.
We're gonna pause right here. We got to take another quick break. Ladies and gentlemen, again, this is the new format for Rooted in Progress here. We don't want you to sign off, click off, scroll off. We want you to stay put. Stand by, we'll be right back. Welcome back to the Rooted in Progress Studios, Naisha Harper, along with myself and District Five candidate.
Thomas Scott in the building. Pastor Thomas Scott. Put some respect on his name.
So, Mr. Scott, we, we, for those who are just joining us, you can, um, uh, always go back and listen to our stream on YouTube, but, uh, Mr. Scott, Mr. Scott had some pretty powerful, powerful, uh, statements on, on his agenda and his plan on running for District Five. Before we wrap, Mr. Scott, is there anything that you would just like to tell the people?
Any final notes?
Other than get out and vote.
Yes.
Especially since early voting starts today, started today.
Yeah, started today, uh, through Sunday, the seventh, and then the last day to vote is September the ninth. I think it's very important for people to get out to vote and, and then you got a choice of fourteen candidates. And so I think you have to look at the experience that I bring as a candidate, having served on Hillsborough County Commission for ten years and all, uh, uh, the economic development that we brought to the district as a county commission, uh, all the things that we created in terms of Operation Clean Sweep, which I didn't get a chance to talk about for Hillsborough, for the Hillsborough County, which I represented Progress Village, Clarimale and all that. We did what we call Operation Clean Sweep. That's where you go in, clean up all those abandoned fields and areas and streets and all that, you know, and, 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 and try to create it for redevelopment, for jobs to come in and so forth. So, so my experience and all the accomplishment that we've been able to do as an elected official from a county commission perspective, and then also as a city council representative for District Five, which I represented from two thousand seven, two thousand eleven. Keeping in mind that there are others who came behind me, uh, subsequent to that time, since that time. But we have a great record, uh, serving on city council, being involved with the community, touching the community. I think at the end of the day, what's important to me is being able to touch the people in District Five.
Yep.
Touch people who are poor, people who are underserved, people underprivileged, and give them a good quality of life. As I often say, I know what it means to be poor. I grew up with eleven brothers and sisters, three bedroom, what we called at that time shotgun house. You can see shotgun, but you can see from the front door all the way to the back. That's right. And four of us slept in one bed, two up to the top, two down to the bottom. I understand what it is for my mother not to have four cents for milk. What I cared for lunch was a mayonnaise sandwich. That's two slices of bread with mayonnaise in the middle. I understand what it is to have to wear the same clothes to school every day. Come home, you had to take them off. Understand all that.
Yeah.
But I rose above that because I wanted something better, a better quality of life. And I won't let, for people in District Five.
Yeah.
There are people who deserve a better quality of life. They deserve.
And a fair quality of life.
Yes, very much.
Well, Mr. Scott, we want to thank you. Real quick, before we again, get out of here, tell us, tell the people how they can get in touch with you, how they can donate. They don't live in the district, but they could still contribute, support you.
Well, um, unfortunately, they can't donate after today. After the dancing deadline. Report is due tomorrow, but, uh, Thomas, electthomasscott.com, electthomasscott.com. Uh, you know, that's one way of reaching me, get into my website and all of that. Uh, and there also, we have a phone number there that they can call. Uh, by the way, we, uh, we, uh, making it available. We are making it available for people to call. I don't, I don't even know it right offhand. I think my son had, Mark, you have that number?
We'll get it. We'll get it.
We'll get it.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll put it on our website. We'll cover it in this episode.
And they can call that number. We'll get people to the polls and all of that. But again, listen, this is a great show. I enjoy myself.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all for inviting me. I really had a very, very good time. It was a very good conversation.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Scott. Yeah, absolutely. So.
Good luck to you.
Yeah, good luck and, um, you know, Godspeed, sir. So here we go. So, Naisha, uh, you did it.
I did it. Woo, can I get some sirens, horns, claps, something?
Well, I, I tell you, what a, what a interesting conversation that we had and, and, um, you know, Mr. Scott is, is a pioneer in the Tampa, Tampa area. So, uh, best luck to all of our candidates, best luck to, to, you know, those going forward. Again, early elections started today.
Early voting started today.
I'm sorry. Yeah, early, early voting started today. So, uh, get out and vote. Naisha, you District Five.
Yes, I think I'm gonna vote on the ninth.
You think?
I, I will. I, I can't do the early voting.
You can't do it?
I got things to do. After this, I gotta go do a newscast.
But that's the whole purpose of early voting. So you don't have to wait in line and rush and.
No, I like.
And heaven forbid.
Election day is like an appointment for me.
Well, and heaven, heaven forbid if it rains.
I got my Maxipin right umbrella. I'll be all right. I'll be September ninth for sure.
You young folks.
Make sure y'all join me.
Always want to push to the last minute. Naisha, tell us a little bit about where can you watch, find us, like and subscribe?
Yes, for all of our, if you need to check out our past episodes with our candidates, check us out on YouTube, Spotify, Apple Podcasts. But for now, uh, go out and vote and stay rooted.
Stay rooted, folks. Thank you guys for joining us. Have a good one.